One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. Good to see the crowd again. All beneath the door. We need to add drainage and grant raise resolution on there.
With those changes, I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Prove the minutes, December second. After looking through them, if you're correct from last meeting, motion to approve.
Seconds.
Any discussion? All in favor? All clear. Prove the claims.
I read through them. We got two hundred and fourteen dollars and seventy-four cents in drainage. And four hundred and forty thousand, three hundred dollars and ninety-seven cents in general.
That's what I got, so I'll second that.
We ever heard of drainage that low?
No, I don't think so. It was just two of the commissioners that looked at it.
Okay, motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor? General public concern? Anybody to speak up this morning? Ben, you're up.
Matt, did you want to play the sound of the day before you s- I was listening to you before I run up to say. They play a sound and then they pay-
You can tell them in the hallway after.
Twenty-five bucks and if nobody gets it, then the next time they had another twenty-five bucks, so it's worth listening to the whole thing.
I, I had it on.
Oh, maybe?
You should have known that one.
Uh, first item that I've got on the agenda is to approve the twenty-eighty agreement. For the raise grant application for Murray Bridge. This is a, a duplicate of what we did last year with the seven counties. Uh, bundled together with the uh, Iowa County Engineers Association Service Bureau, running as the, uh, point.
Lead.
The lead, yes.
These are same county, same projects?
Same county, same projects. You're done. They're, uh, they're re-upping and, and tweaking the application. So we need to score highly on, I think it's six out of the eight categories that are in the application in this last go around, we scored highly on five. So we're going back, re-tweaking the ones that need to be-
Tweaked a little bit.
Adjusted and, um, pushing forward, I guess.
So are we in this as a group? Or are we fighting for the long spot?
Group.
Okay, so, uh, we are applying for twenty-five million, split out between the seven counties. Uh, I believe the portion that we're looking for is around two-point-five. For our project, we've already got two million.
So that is really close.
Yeah, we've already got two million in competitive highway bridge funding from uh, the federal government towards this project. This is-
And what resolution, how do we call this?
Well, this isn't the resolution yet, right?
So this is the twenty-eighty portion.
Well, if this is all good and we just need to approve the twenty-eighty agreement. With the ICEA Service Bureau, I would make a motion that we do that.
I'll second that.
Any other discussions? All in favor? Now the resolution, twenty, twenty-four days, twelve days, oh nine.
Yeah, the second portion of this is to approve the resolution twenty-twenty-four, twelve dash oh nine. Uh, this is the resolution that ties us with that same project. They needed both- They needed both an agreement and a resolution.
I'm assuming all that is in order to enable to do that, so I'd make a motion to accept resolution twenty-twenty-four, dash twelve, dash oh nine.
I'll second that.
Any other? More, you know, second, all in favor?
Yeah, I'm not, our bunkers are all full of sand. Got a board of adjustment meeting scheduled for tonight out at our office at six P M. That is a change of venue. Uh, typically that is held up here at the courthouse, but for simplicity and the fact that I have a key to the other building. Move locations, so that will be out at the, uh, meeting room at the county engineer's office. Yeah, on that, we had, uh, meetings Wednesday, Thursday, Friday down in Des Moines. Pretty good meetings for the most part. They had, uh, Casey Wolf, the guy that's-
I listened to him before.
He was very, yeah, he was very good, so he was the motivational speaker for the meeting. Well attended, but it was well attended, yeah, there was a lot of, a lot of counties there. Yes.
I can't remember what county in North East Iowa that was at our district meeting, if they were bragging about their, they got the raise grant last year.
Yeah, so, um, the former county engineer from Palo Alto. Uh, he was not the lead, it was, uh, Chicksaw, Clayton. Or no, I'm sorry, Floyd Clayton and, um, I can picture.
Hopefully this is our county.
Yeah, uh, there's been new rules put in place now after that one, so. They they snuck their application in and listed the D O T as a flow-through without telling the D O T that they're gonna be a flow-through, so.
But they appreciate that.
I mean, the, the D O T is the ones that took all of the projects and vetted them down to it's called the Magnificent Seven. Out of the ninety-nine counties and all of the applications for bridges, they're the ones that narrowed us down to the seven that we have, so.
Anything else for Ben? Thank you. Okay. Julie from Edmo.
Good morning. Thanks for having me back again. Want to thank you for your support that you've given last year. Um, we use it for client services and here to request the same amount as we did last year, which is twelve thousand dollars. And then I'll just review, um, statistics from your county. Um, nothing major has really happened, no great variation in numbers, just a slight decline in the cost of services provided back into your county, the number of individuals served and the number of households served. And so we'll walk through that. If you look at page two, um, there's a graph and a chart of services. Um, on the top of the chart, their total services, return on investment of, um, county money, we, we invested over three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars of services back into Humboldt County. If you look at the gray, the bottom line, um, energy, which would be your lie heap services, crisis services, um, a hundred and seventy-one thousand, which was a decrease from last year. Food went up to sixty-four thousand, was at fifty-eight. Um, others stayed pretty steady, and that's like our baby room, coats for kids, the hat and mitten projects that Outreach does. Housing went down. Housing is where we help with deposits or, um, rent. And we, Edmo has received, um, housing grants, and so that department has really expanded. It just goes by who applies and who needs it, and if we can find landlords that are willing to work with us. Senior programs that went down due to funding, um, it went down to nine hundred dollars from two thousand. And those that applied were fewer, um, same with youth programs, that went down about a thousand dollars last year. Where we saw an increase was in our special projects, and one of those is going on today. We have adoptive family going on at the fairgrounds today, back-to-school projects, bike for types, I mean, those are the ones you really hear about. Um, it's either those or the food pantry that people know us for. The big change this year was weatherization, and I think we've talked about that in the past, that you have to apply for lie heap, you have to own your home, and then an auditor, one of our auditors comes out and does a very complex, called a neat audit, and goes through and determines what is the biggest bang for the buck. Usually it's insulation or furnace, water heater, that type of thing. And so, um, that comes up to the three hundred and twenty-seven thousand that was put back into your county. On the next two pa-, on the next page, there's two charts. The top one is how many individuals we served. We served three thousand four hundred and eight individuals, which is a slight decrease, about five hundred from last year. And, um, you can see what categories, remember that if you use the services, you're counted in each category. Next year, I should be able to disaggregate that data for you. We have a new data system that we started. Um, so hopefully we can get some unduplicated totals. Then the number of households served in the past year was one thousand three hundred and thirty-six. And again, whatever services they use, they could be counted more than once. And that was a slight decrease of a less than two hundred houses last year.
So why do you think the decrease, is it because of staffing issues?
I would attribute it to that, probably. Um, right now, it'll be interesting to see what your lie heap numbers are for next year. Um, the state has launched a new data system that was kind of developed in a few months, so it's not going very smoothly. And so if you hear frustrations over that, they're very valid. Um, nothing that we can control, the system's on one minute and it could be shut down the next. We're taking paper applications, we're having to take those, and then staff are being paid a second time to input those. Um, the state did amend our contract and give us extra money for that. Um, so that was covered, but I'm still not saying it's working smoothly.
Right, so does some of this money that as far as, you know, like money that was donations and things like that, is that included in this too?
Yes, that's like food, if you donate a can, it's, it's weighed and then, um, figured out. When families come, we, we calculate what we give them as about seventy-five dollars worth of food. Which is, you know, when you go to the grocery store, that's not very much, because a single person each week can easily spend over a hundred dollars.
I know Susie raised quite a bit of money for bikes for types, so I didn't know how that was in, included in this, or?
That would have been in the special projects category.
Okay.
If you donate something and you label it bikes for types, or it goes to food, then it has to go in that category.
Okay.
Um, we're trying to get away from that, because we can never pull that money and use it. If a family needed money for a deposit, or they needed money for food, and we didn't have any, we couldn't move that money. So, um, our, our accountant has encouraged us to go to general operations, which pays the rent and staff, and then programs, operations money. And so that way, then we can use it where people need it. If we need more gifts for adoptive family, but you gave during the bike for types event, then we could move that money and use it for that, but if you gave for bikes for types, we cannot move that money.
Once it's earmarked, it has to stay in this category. We've seen, uh, that have huge number in one area and they're way down on the other.
Yeah.
They can't move it.
Yeah, we can be in the red in a county because of paying staff in that general operations versus we could have fifty thousand sitting in bikes for types, but we can't use it. It has to sit there.
State funding for staff?
We do, and that C S B G dollars, and that has decreased over the years due to our census. And we know census was taken during COVID. So, um, hopefully when they do that again, we'll get a more accurate number, but we went through a three-year decline on C S B G dollars, and that's a five-year grant, and so the state will be reapplying. And so like all of us executive directors from Community Action are on an Iowa Community Action Agency Board, and we help the state, but we have to negotiate with each other. We knew we would have a loss with our population decline, it was a matter of how much money would we lose? And we settled about right in the middle, so it could have been worse.
Okay, that's good.
I mean, that's how life goes. Any other questions or anything?
Well, since I serve on this board, I would tell you that unfortunately, we have a lot of requests. And just like everybody else, our funds are dwindling. So when we start having Chris do the magic wand over our budget, we're gonna do our best to provide the ones that we've supported.
Right.
But can't guarantee you that it'll be a hundred percent. And Rick's gonna be the man that's gonna sit down in that chair next year, so we'll blame it all on him.
We do have a good partnership with Alyssa and the economic development, so that makes it more cost-effective also. So, yeah, and we appreciate- The building, yeah, yeah, we have a- Yeah, we have a great partnership there and, um, and- Yeah, unless we own the building.
Great.
We have been, we've cut hours, you know, we have, um, tried to do cost-saving measures. We did planning with the board and with our staff as to what and how to do that. Um, so we've cut staff, we've, um, cut hours that were open based on the data of the number of clients coming in. We have started a Giving Tuesday, which was our first year last year, hoping to build that, so we're looking for other revenue streams also. I think so.
So can you explain a little bit more what's going on? You said the, um-
Adoptive family, yeah. Um, people can go into the outreach office and they can pick and choose families, seniors, people with children, and then you can go out and buy, um, typically they put three needs on there and one want. And then you can go buy gifts for them, drop them off this morning at the fairgrounds, and then this afternoon, families can come pick them up. So we haul them out to the car for them.
Usually those were given at the churches beforehand, were they, any of them given?
I think churches still do some of that kind of thing on their own.
Okay.
Yeah.
But that way you worked with Edmo on that, so I know we had in the past, but we see you think.
They, they could have. Um, we do have a new worker there, she does seem to be good. So getting her connected to the community and getting the word out would be next steps kind of thing, so.
You might want to have her go to a ministerial meeting or something like that.
I'll pass that on.
And that would, that way you'll get the information out to all of them.
Okay.
That's, because if we've had a, getting a better attendance.
Good, okay, that's good enough, thank you. Anything else? Okay, thank you very much, okay, appreciate your time.
I'll second.
All in favor? We are in green. This, uh, was something I mentioned last week, and I have Travis Peterson here to help explain some of this. Mentioned, yeah, second. Uh, don't have Travis sounds, I mean, you can come up here Travis and so you can really give us a slowdown. He has just finished up the project in the upper portion of BP eleven. And, uh, through his research, when he was doing that, realized that the very lower portion of, this is a huge open ditch district. Lower portion has been cleaned out in very recent history, going back to two thousand twelve, nineteen seventeen. Uh, but there's a neglecting system, I guess. There's a neglected area that shows in pink that has probably been thirty plus years since it's cleaned out. And so Travis, I'll let you explain what you've seen since you've got that upper portion.
Okay. Uh, well, yeah, I mean, the, that upper mile and a quarter has gone pretty well, pretty typical clean out. I mean, there was a good amount of silt in it, so it, it needed cleaned. But in the process of cleaning that, you know, we had to go a little further downstream to start than we initially thought, because there was a, there was a good three feet of dirt in that box culvert under the road there with a pretty big pile on the bottom end apron. So we really wanted to get that cleaned to start this ditch clean out, so our water could get away there. And I ended up having to go, you know, roughly half a mile, maybe just under that downstream to get the water to run away from that box culvert, so we could get it cleaned out. Um, we did, it, it worked because we had no, no upstream waterfall, you know, the top line part running. It was dry enough, essentially I just opened up a holding channel and let all the water run into it, and then we get that box culvert cleaned out, um, and then we started heading upstream. But it's, wh- what my concern is when I talked with, with Eric, is the next time this top end fills up with water, we're gonna have that holding pond effect, because there's so much silt downstream of it still. It can't get out until that water gets, you know, at least a couple feet deep going up this top end and it goes over the top. And like the section that runs along the gravel road has got unfortunately just a lot of sand in it. Um, it was, kinda had to be careful cutting it, because it's very, very sandy in there. So my main concern was what's gonna happen to the walls if that top end just fills up with water and sits there? Because that's where we see really the biggest problems, is when we get those pools of water that don't leave, and it just saturates the bank. They end up falling in inevitably, and at that point, the fixes would still be clean out this middle section, but then there's also gonna be bank failures that have to get addressed. So I'm just, was trying to get ahead of this in, you know, what I'm reporting to Eric. And then I look back through my notes, and that's where I got all these, these different dates that you see on the other branches there. We've kind of been all over in that upper part of Bloody Run Creek since, uh, twenty-twelve was the first time we went up there. And we kind of cleaned the main ditch up to kind of that pink highlighted portion, and that's where we stopped, you know, approximately in there.
So it's just north of Randy's? Barkins, is it Barkin?
Yeah, yep, well, that's where, um, yeah, because that's on, yeah, that's where it crosses the blacktop, I think. But we went, um, yeah, that's, that's where we started this year, that did that, did that very top end. And then I, I looked through my notes and, and where we quit in, in twenty-twelve, and where we started this year, there's about exactly a two-mile stretch in there that never got, never got done. I don't think there's as much in there as there was, you know, clear up at the very top. But there's enough that it's gonna keep the top from emptying out like it should, and, um, it, you know, it'd be nice if that water would fill up and then just kind of flow out, let everything start to dry out as much as it can, instead of just sitting there and saturating all the fresh-cut banks on the top end. Um, then some of the other dates on there, those are just other branches that we've done. You know, essentially, we've been over the whole thing up in that top end since twenty-twelve, other than that, that pink section in the middle.
So roughly you'd be digging out equivalent on pink section about what you've done on the north?
It'd be, it'd be pretty close, I mean, I think it's, you know, within a quarter mile of what we just did this year, up on the top end.
Well, you estimate the cost in that?
I mean, I would, I would guess it at roughly fifty thousand to dig it out. I mean, it might, it could be less than that, I, I'm guessing it at, you know, the amount of silt I had where we started this year was a couple feet. It wasn't, uh, it wasn't astronomical, but it's kind of enough, it was two to three feet most of the way up. And I, you know, I had, I had one pile in there in front of a surface drain that was about five feet deep. So there were spots where it would build and fall back off. Um, so, I mean, just going with that amount of hours, that's kind of where I would guess the, guess the digging, digging at, excuse me. And then, I mean, the outlet pipe is always the big unknown. You know, could be one, it could be thirty, and I, you know, in this upper end, we had, there, there's a few up there that are bad, but it's, uh, it's less than, than say the ditch we did a year ago. That one ended up having just a ton of buried bad, broken pipe in the end, but, you know, some of them I can't even see until we get the ditch cleaned, so it's those-
Even there.
Yeah. Yep. But, uh, no, I mean, I guess I would put this one at, yeah, about like the one we're doing now, there's, I would say there's probably a, maybe a little less silt. You know, generally we find more as we head towards the top end, so this is-
Is, is that a box or a bridge on the blacktop? That's a box there.
There's a box by Jacobson's, there's a box by Randy Barkins. Uh, you go down in between the Floridas, that's a bridge. Nygard's is a pipe. Further downstream is a double box on Georgia. One fifty of those scheduled to be replaced, I think, it's about eighty percent down to any one.
That's a box, and we should be also charging for chiropractic, because that gives you that adjustment as you go over. I don't know how many times we, we patched it numerous times, but it's still,
it's, it's, so it's, there's a, you're gonna run into sand seams there. When you start digging, Travis.
Yeah.
On the east side of that box culvert.
Okay.
So I know we buried it in this. Southern corner of that.
Oh, really?
Okay, yeah, I found a lot up along that gravel road, uh, Colorado, I think it is, yeah. Where it runs right along the road, and somebody had dumped a lot of big, I mean, boulders in there. They're all over the place, and they, uh, you know, they rolled down into the middle and they're kind of making the water cut around them.
We've got it above it.
That was a mess, but it's, you know, what do you do with the sand? There's not, not much you can do with it, we're just trying to get it to hold up and stay there. That's where the saturation worries me, especially in that spot. If I just, you know, I dig the silt away and I can just watch the water come flowing out right out of the wall, and it just,
Yeah.
I just gotta leave it alone until it quits doing that and, and then try to carefully cut it and get it to stay there.
Yeah.
What do you put on the, so that it doesn't fall down or whatever?
Well, what, what I do is I cut the middle out of the ditch, kind of, kind of core it out and get the bulk of it, and then I kind of leave it like that to kind of hold the bank from sliding while it drains out. And then when it looks like it's done kind of flowing water out of itself, then I go back and do kind of my final nice cut on it. And most of the time doing it that way, you know, you can get it to hold up, so you get it exposed to the air, and if it'll stay there and everything can start drying out. You know, it's when they get so deep with silt and that water just sits pooled up there. Well, unfortunately, along the road, there was about a foot less silt along the road, which was a little less spoil pile, but being there was higher silt downstream of it, we, all we had there was just a deeper amount of water that never left. It just sat there. And then, yeah, it's unfortunate, that's a kind of a big sand seam, you know, like Ben was talking about.
Yeah, wet sand.
No, most of that ditch has been really hard, I mean, that's got a, one of the- No, most of that ditch has been really hard. I mean, that's got a, one of the hardest clay bottoms on it I've got. It's, you know, it's almost like scraping sand right off of concrete in, in a lot of spots. So it's, I mean, you can easily tell when you get to original bottom in this one, but. The wall along that road is, is a lot of sand. There's, there's spots in it where it was clay and pretty good, but I. A lot of it was a big sand seam. So we, to answer Sandy's question, we kind of do what we can with it, um. Yeah, if you found a really bad spot that just wouldn't stop and kept puking out sand. Um, I know the engineers have had guys, you know, drop a tile line behind the wall in there, which. I wouldn't be as concerned about this spot if it wasn't along the road. That's, you're so limited on what you can do. You know, we don't want to start putting the road in jeopardy ever, and I, I don't know that it would get that bad, but. It's hard to say.
All right. Well, we had our IDDA meeting, and this is where we get into trouble when we get around fifty thousand. If we go over fifty thousand, we're supposed to have a hearing. And it's hard to, like you said, it's gonna be about fifty thousand. Well, I know we did one southeast of town. It's gonna be about forty-five or fifty came in or fifty-two. So technically, you should have a hearing. Well, it's hard to say on those type of deals, so maybe we should have a hearing on this, just to be ca- safe. And let the landowners know about it. And it sounds to me like they'll more than likely be all in favor of it. But I, I kind of wonder if we shouldn't still do that, cuz you're not gonna be able to get it done this year anyway.
No, I mean, this, this would be a next year project. We're getting, it's getting pretty froze right now, the way it is. I'm. I'm on the outlet fixing the few outlet pipe that are bad in the top end of this one. I can still get through it, but it's. It's getting sketchy with how hard it's getting. So, yeah, th- this would be a next year. I just, I wanted to tell Eric about it. You know, so maybe it's, it's one of those things. If we were gonna do it, we don't have to wait until the end of the year and get pushing into fighting. The frozen dirt. I think it's all set aside, um, from what I remember and what I can tell from the satellite photos. So I, I don't think it would disturb anybody's farming for the year.
Yeah.
Which is just kind of nice benefit there, that area, but.
Well, we did the hearing and got all that, like, like we're done.
Yeah, and that's, that's fairly simple. You just, you know, notice and.
And I'm always available if anybody had a question about what I found or what happened here. You know, just let me know.
Yeah.
That's, that's no big deal. Yeah, that, that's kind of what I found anyway in the course of cleaning this top end, so. There's a couple landowners that already know. They've stopped out to see me and ask how, how it's going, what I'm finding, you know, so they're, I've told a couple of them about. This issue already when they stop out and talk to me, so.
Yeah.
Well, I think you're right, Rick. I don't think there'd be any opposition. It is, that is the main open ditch of ED eleven, so it's a huge district. The only thing is, you know, you're gonna send out a lot of notices, but.
I know, but.
You can do it and have the hearing. I know, talking with Colin Fingbile. Everybody got a sheet that Chris provided from the CD, you know, the conference. It, uh, it would be, you know, the thing to do. I don't think there'd be an opposition, because you're not looking at them. When you spread it across that vast acreage, it isn't gonna be like a huge per acre cost to any of the landlord. Uh, and one of the landowners right in that pink area, their family has farmed that ground for years. And he did say, he couldn't say exactly, I'm sure, good research, like Travis did back. Possibly early to mid nineties, that last summer, not sophomore part or all of that pink area probably was clean. Which is a good thing, because like Travis said, it would keep the, the, the silt amount out, but it's still there. I mean, it's been twenty to twenty-five years of, you know, accumulation.
Yeah, it's not, it's not five feet deep, you know. Yeah, some of them that are that old, we've, we've found an amazing amount of silt in the north, and it, i- it's not that. And I, you know, that dollar amount, I, I'm just guessing, you know, I'm, I'm trying not to. Short it too much and be realistic, but it, you know, if it's, it could be less than that, and if, if it's less than that, it's less than that. Trying to kind of shoot somewhere in the middle, be somewhat accurate, so. It's, I did move through the, the bottom section where we're at now a lot faster than the top end. So I'm, you know, hopeful that this, this section down here, that two mile stretch would be more like that. But, um. Uh, you never know what you find in these things either. But I, from what I'm seeing, I don't think it looks like anything crazy. It's just. It, it, it's really gonna hold up that water in the top end from flowing out, so.
We just had to have a hearing. We don't have to have an engineer, correct?
And basically, a hearing is just to inform the public and listen to people come in and say, no, it don't need to be done.
Right.
And then if there's a lot of opposition to it, then maybe we do an engineer's report or something. I mean, we just got schooled on that Friday.
Yeah.
You should say, you know, but even though you have a two hundred and six thousand dollar limit the first of January, there's still that fifty thousand dollar. Mark in there that you gotta stay below or have a hearing. And like you say, it gets delicate when it gets that close.
Yeah.
You know.
Yep. So then if we had the hearing and his number didn't come in at fifty-two, we'd be covered.
And it comes in at thirty-eight, thank you fools, could've just done it.
Yeah, well.
But, I mean, I'm not trusting you, you know what it's gonna cost and.
The, the pipe is really the unknown. It's, there's, you know, you can go through and count them up and it's. You might get half of them usually, so it, usually I don't even bother anymore, you know, unless somebody requested that I go count. I just dig it out first and mark them. I use the map on my phone, put the size in as I go. And then count them up at the end. Cuz there's, there's so many you can't see. They were buried or the grass is covering them so bad.
Yeah. Straight up, that's when you find it.
Yeah, there are a few like that. When they get under the dirt, there's, there's no way to know they were there, but. Most of the time there, if they're under the dirt, they're rusted out and kind of. But.
Well, that's what Travis and I talked about. Like, I'm, I'm fully aware of the, you know, leadering on that.
Yeah, it's so.
The correct thing would be to have a hearing the early part of the year. You cover all your bases. Like you said, it cuts right around the cutoff of what we're supposed to do. Um, I would just suggest.
And it gives you a little more flexibility and then think, oh geez, I'm getting close. I better. Speed this process up, you know. I'd rather have you do a good job. Where about that fifty thousand dollar threshold.
Yeah.
You know.
Yep.
And the other thing, like Travis said, it, it's, a lot of these projects seem to be end of the year. If you can put this on the first year, it will be done lately. You know, and you never know how soon it can start in the spring, but at least you'd have to go ahead. I think that's what he was looking for.
Well, it would help bring the rain.
There you go.
Bruce, it might, it might keep it, it might keep it away.
No, I'm happy to do them anytime. It was just a. It, it goes a little easier during the nice part of the year.
Yeah, yeah.
The other guy that works with you, doesn't he get a little ollie when he wants to?
Yeah, yeah, he does. You'll, you'll see me in the excavator. He comes out when I, when I really get in trouble.
Well, that would be my recommendation too, Rick. Do that, set up a hearing and, or notify him and. Have the hearing and go that route.
Yeah, do that. How long do you think it would take, is it hearing setup?
I mean. I don't know. Do we have to adhere to the? We don't have to publish this one, do we?
I just told Colin.
Yeah, it's called Colin asking what the rules are on that.
I would do it after the first of the year with the holidays. December would be too crazy. I would say in January sometimes, since it's not gonna be done right away anyway. All right.
All right, well, thank you very much, guys. Just let me know if, if you guys need me for, for that meeting or anything in the future, any questions or, or whatever you need. Thanks, guys.
Anything else for drainage?
Part that comes off here. What is that?
Big emotions lead drainage.
Okay, moving on down, committee report. Well, as it turns out, uh, nothing official. Other than what Travis just explained when we looked at the ditch. That was it.
Uh, I was down to Fort Dodge on Friday morning for the IDBA annual meeting. Had good speakers there and we say, um, we talked about that fifty thousand dollar threshold thing and. It's like, it's, it's a, it's a hard thing to decide, cuz a lot of times that's where it gets, oh, it's, could be high, could be low, so. Probably best just to cover yourself. So now that's all I had.
All right, Thursday night I had CFR, uh, Zoom meeting for monthly meeting, um. Think they're. Still waiting on a couple of grants or money for that, uh, Des Moines building project that they're trying to. Move ahead, um. But it sounds like it's getting closer. And then Friday I went down to the drainage meeting for a while and. Left in the middle of it, I guess, so. That's all I did.
So Thursday the fifth, I went to the District Two, um, ISACs. Which they wanted to explain was that Iowa State Association of County Supervisors, it's our affiliation for the supervisors. And, um. It was a really good meeting. We had a lot, um, pretty good participation from the different counties. Um, Dean Close nominated me to be president of District Two.
Very.
I know. So now I'm the president of District Two. But then I turned around because I can't be on the education board, so then I nominated Dean to be on the education. Uh, but that didn't take a vote. He's gotta apply, so he's gonna, but he, he was interested in that, so. Cuz the education is very important to make sure that we are relevant and that we're doing the education that we should. Um, ISAC talked about their, um, legislative objectives and. Um, one of the big things was the Medicare funding or Medicaid, I'm sorry, not Medicare, Medicaid funding. Um, we need to get the state to increase, um, what they're going to be giving to hospitals and, um, mental health. Um. The next thing, there was the federal requirement for prisoners that are in Medicaid. They lose coverage as soon as they come into a jail or a prison. So when that happens, that it's on the bracket of the county. So we need to all make sure that we're getting a hold of our federal legislators and make sure that they would. Start working on getting that so that the state, but then we gotta work at the state to get them to cover. So it's just a vicious, it's just a vicious back and forth, yeah. Um, one thing that, um, the ISAC, um, team, they were there to talk, they talked about the, um, House File seven eighteen, they're gonna be, um. Uh, re. The legislator is gonna be looking at property tax reform and this, how the, yeah, the, I know, it's just like. So they want us to put together a list of issues since House File seven eighteen. And then we need to get that to them and to our legislators so that they know what we're dealing with and what they need to do for reform. So that's very, very important that we do that. Um, how it's gonna affect our budgets and I know. Yes, yes, all that needs to be, we just need to get kind of like bullet points of what's hitting us. And then get that to ISAC and then get it to our legislators. Um. There's gonna be, uh, judicial money was not allocated, okay, there's gonna be a webinar on twelve twelve. On the distribution, um, to counties. Evidently, the, um. The judicial. For the courthouses and the courtrooms and all that stuff was not distributed correctly. So that's a webinar. We probably wanna make sure that we, somebody, um, is on December twelfth. So there's like mi- a few million dollars.
Oh gee.
That they got that needs to get distributed to the county, so we need to make sure that we get our share. Um. Comp Board to ISAC, we are one of the only counties that is not going to do the comp board. Um, so I told them, we'll let them know how that goes. And I just said that I had talked to some of our comp board people that was on it and they didn't really wanna participate because. Um, we've been brought it down, but I explained, we had to do that for our budget. I mean, we can't be given twelve percent and all that, and we just don't have it in our budget anymore. Uh, let's see. Oh, the other thing we need to work on is how many vets are in our county. Um, so that we are, um, looking at making sure that we're meeting the veterans, um. Needs. So they said that was a big thing that we need to get a census of how many veterans are in our. Um, Mark Thompson brought that, can you, okay, Mark Thompson brought that up. He said that a lot of counties are going to full-time veteran affairs if their veterans have a hire. But he said he also knows that that stresses our budget if we do that, so. But that is something we probably need to be working on. The other thing that was brought up. Was winter binds could have a state conformity of what. Um, setbacks are and different things are, so they're gonna be working on that in the legislature, so we need to be aware of that. Um. Federal tax credit on green energy, um, they're gonna be working on that with this, yeah. So they get, they were talking about how everybody gets. Um, a lot of these projects, the reason why they're going on is because of federal tax. And credits, incentives and things like that. When the state's doing just as much, so we need to make sure that if the Fed big increase that we don't. Also let on the state, but then the feds might mandate that too. I don't know. It's, it's, everything's kind of in the, in the ear about that. Um, Bremmer County, um, just did a pipeline resolution, maybe that's something. Um, we need to be looking at against eminent domain. So, um, we maybe need to get the Bremmer County resolution. It has not. Had a lawsuit against it yet, so it might be a fairly good one to go, like, I mean, I don't, Shelby's is just so restrictive, like, we know we're gonna. And we don't need more lawsuits.
They did, we were talking in the drainage thing about that pipeline thing. There was, I can't remember which county it was, that. They're taking out the pipeline now and they're not.
They're not removing the old one. They installed a new one, but they didn't remove the old.
And they're supposed to restore it to exactly how it was before the land and they're having issues with that.
What type of pipeline?
Natural.
Natural, yeah.
Okay, that's all I had.
Wednesday ahead of my this meeting. And I have. I told Stacy to get you something. I didn't care what it was, whatever she's got today, send it to you. So she should be getting back to that. They're gonna put an ad in for a planner, um. They said these kids, some of them will be graduating and stuff, and see if they can get one out of college. Also, they're putting an ad in the paper for an office manager, and she took another position in the company. And they gave some facts. And I think this is strange, but it's something to do with getting a eighty percent match for the buses, to buy new buses. They've got forty-one buses total. With fifteen drivers.
Yeah, they can't, they can't keep drivers, I'm sure.
They're still looking for one in Humboldt County. Uh, they got five of them buses are junk that they gotta get off their books, and this is something to do with the federal. Uh. To get the loans, the eighty percent loans for the new bus and stuff. So they gotta get some of them, drive them off the books and junk them. They are junk and. Then they had one wrecked here a while back and they've gotta get it fixed, uh, the insurance company told them. But, uh, I'll give you this, Rick, there's some interesting stuff in there. Um. Well, like a hundred and seventy-six inch light duty medium sized buses. Federal funding cell is eighty, ceiling is eighty-two thousand, six forty, eighty-five percent paid by federal. So they've got several buses. So they've got several buses that's coming up, that's gonna be done. But they gotta keep them on record and all that, so you can have that if you want. And they're still working on our comprehensive plan and mitigation plan and the mapping, so. I talked to Stacy and I told Brew and, uh, Ben that. I said, whatever she's got up to date, send it to us so we can look at it.
It's supposed to be completed by the end of the year, correct?
I reminded her.